Okay. Okay. Thank you. I won't be here, but that's okay.
Good afternoon. This is to call the May 16th, 2023 Board of Trustees Regular Meeting to Order. It is now 6:30. May we have a roll call?
Certainly. Trustee Cox?
Here.
Trustee Fishman?
Here.
Trustee Nealon?
Here.
Trustee O'Keefe?
Here.
Trustee Riddle?
Here.
Trustee Summer?
Here.
Trustee McDonald?
Here.
Do we do the certification now or do I leave now?
After we administer the vote.
Okay. At this time, we will have the secretary's certification of membership of our new Board of Trustees. Okay. Thank you. Trustee O'Keefe?
Um, do I need to read this? I'm sorry. I do. Okay, one moment, please.
And you want to spend the night? Are you doing one at a time or three at a time? Do you want?
I might. One moment. Oh, thank you so much. Just...
She needs to certify first and then we can get that.
So, this is the April 4th, 2023 Consolidated Election. The Cook County Clerk, having completed a canvas of all votes cast for trustee Will Matt Library District for year, hereby certifies the following vote totals. Joan A. Fishman, 25.35% votes of 3271. Renee Cox, 25%, 3226 votes. Carolyn Sennett, 24.91%, 3214 votes. And Maria F. Di Lorenzo, 24.73% with 3191 votes, totaling 100% of 12,902 votes. This election, having been certified to me as four to be elected, results in Joan A. Fishman, Renee Cox, Carolyn Sennett, Maria F. Di Lorenzo being elected. Below is the abstract of votes by precinct dated this April 25th, 2023, Karen A. Yarborough, Cook County Clerk. Thank you.
Okay. So, the next item on the agenda is we're going to administer the oath of office to our new trustees. And we will go one by one, and we'll ask you to stand at the microphone over here in the center of the room. And trustee O'Keefe will administer the oath.
And would you like that done in alphabetical order?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you so much. So, could Renee Cox please go to... And shall I do it here or shall I go over there? Which is easiest? Yes, you can. Or do I read it and then she repeats it?
Yeah. Read and repeat.
Okay. We should remember it wasn't that long ago. No, it wasn't. But it was at the same time. Uh, this is the oath of office for library trustee Will Matt Public Library District. I, Renee Cox...
I, Renee Cox...
...do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
...and that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
...of the Office of Library Trustee...
Of the Office of Library Trustee...
...according to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do I have to say... Yes, you do. And this is... That's mine, so that's not official.
Oh, okay.
So, Maria Di Lorenzo? And did I pronounce it correctly? Yes. Okay, wonderful. Oath of office for the library trustee of Will Matt Public Library District. I, Maria Di Lorenzo...
I, Maria Di Lorenzo...
...do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
...and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office...
...of library trustee...
Of library trustee...
...according to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joan Fishman? Oath of office for library trustee Will Matt Public Library District. I, Joan Fishman...
I, Joan Fishman...
...do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
...and that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties...
...of the Office of Library Trustee...
Of the Office of Library Trustee...
...according to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Congratulations. Oath of office for library trustee Will Matt Public Library District. I, Carolyn Sennett...
I, Carolyn Sennett...
...do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
...and that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
...of the Office of Library Trustee...
Of the Office of the Library... ...of Library Trustee...
...according to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations to the new trustees. At this time, the old trustees will say goodbye, and you can come and take your place. Come on, Fina.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. So, roll call. Trustee Cox?
Here.
Trustee Di Lorenzo?
Here.
Trustee Nealon?
Here.
Trustee O'Keefe?
Here.
Trustee Sennett?
Here.
Trustee Summer?
Here.
And trustee Fishman?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. We will now hear the report of the nominating committee.
Okay. The Will Matt Public Library Board of Trustees Nominating Committee, consisting of trustees Trish Nealon and Renee Cox, propose the following list of nominees for the 2023-25 Will Matt Public Library District Board of Trustees Officers. For president, we propose Joan Fishman. For vice president, we propose Marianne O'Keefe. For secretary, we propose Maria Di Lorenzo. And for treasurer, we propose Tracy Summer. Thank you. And you concur, trustee Cox?
I concur.
All right. Do we have a motion on the slate?
I move approval of the report of the nominating committee and its slate of officers as presented.
I second.
Any discussion? Are there any other nominations from the floor? Then let's have a roll call.
Trustee Cox?
Yes.
Trustee Di Lorenzo?
Yes.
Trustee Nealon?
Yes.
Trustee O'Keefe?
Yes.
Trustee Sennett?
Yes.
Trustee Summer?
Yes.
And trustee Fishman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. We will now take a moment to rearrange ourselves a little bit here.
...to reflect that we didn't actually pass those minutes. So, you will see that change. And then we can sign the minutes actually that we approved at large behaviorally. All right. Thank you.
Thank you for that certification. So, as we review the minutes, any comments or corrections?
I will note that there was a spelling error on how really women voters are represented. We made that correction. Other than that, the rest of the minutes remain unchanged.
I have one minor change. In section A, um, six lines down in the treasurer's report. Correct. All I would add is that it starts at 1.75% or less, Director Austin and John. I might suggest that we add his last name.
My name's Dan Church. I'll just go. We'll add that.
Thank you. And discuss this prior to John's discharge of sole business in North Placid and his last name. I would agree. Thank you for bringing that up. All right. Any other corrections or additions?
Oh. Oh. Thank you, trustee Nealon, for that. Old habits die hard. Old habits are hard to change.
Thanks.
Trustee Cox?
Abstain.
Trustee Di Lorenzo, yes. Trustee Nealon?
Yes.
Trustee O'Keefe?
Yes.
Trustee Sennett?
Yes.
Trustee Summer?
Yes.
Trustee Fishman?
Yes. Thank you very much. Motion passed. Presentations? Well, we don't have any of that, so we'll move right on to the treasurer's report. Trustee Summer, please.
Good evening. If you will look at... If you review the general funds section, you will note that most, if not all, of the material income items are at or above the 10-month rate of 83%, which is good. For example, we are well above the budgeted amount for replacement taxes by almost $50,000. I went online and noted that we're going to get an additional $33,000 in May, so we'll have a total of about $173,000 for the year. So...
Could you repeat that total again?
Yes. $173,000, $57. We're going to get about $33,000 in May.
Got it. Thank you.
According to the website. According to Director Austin, the remainder of the countering funds will come in May and June. Just a couple of checks. The cooperative computer services check for 22,211 is actually something we talked about in the budget and its description. It's for the library catalog and the fee for its members. There was a check to Hydro Power, High Power Electric, for $5,650 for the special reserve fund. That actually was a replacement check that was one that was intercepted and cashed by another party. So, you will see there was no corresponding expense during the period because it was previously expensed. They were able to recover the previous check, and so this is just a replacement check. And Director Austin recently attended a workshop with Wintrust to learn about their new ACH service, which will allow us to wire funds instead of actually having to mail checks. May increase expenses a little bit, but would certainly protect us as far as internal And lastly, in reviewing the balance sheet, it looks like the general fund checking account, which is account number 10101, it looks like it was overdrawn by $268,699. But according to Director Austin, checks had actually been written that day, but not actually presented or passed on or cashed. And they realized that in the first day of May, the funds were transferred in and the checks were covered, so it was never actually overdrawn. Are there any questions on checks, transactions, balances? Do we know how that interception happened?
It's hard to tell, but it appears to have been intercepted in the mail at the place where it was going to be delivered. So, LaMonte, I think, is somewhere in that area.
It was a physical check. So, we're going to try to do less physical checks. Are there any other questions? Comments? All right. Is there a motion from...
Do we have a motion?
Yes.
I move approval of the bills and salaries check detail for April 2023 as presented.
A second, please.
I second.
Thank you. Do we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Trustee Cox?
Yes.
Trustee Di Lorenzo? Yes. Trustee Nealon?
Yes.
Trustee O'Keefe?
Yes.
Trustee Sennett?
Yes.
Trustee Summer?
Yes.
Trustee Fishman?
Yes. Motion passed. Thank you. Moving on, we have action items. Well, we don't have Lisa here for her resolution, but we are delighted that we still have Fina Riddle here. So... Is that me? Oh, thank you. All right. Resolution honoring trustee... Whoops. Over. Fina Riddle. And whereas... I will read this. Whereas Fina Riddle was elected to the Will Matt Public Library Board of Trustees in April 2019 and has ably served for four years. And whereas Fina's interest in the library has been evidenced in numerous areas, including her active participation on the finance committee. And whereas Fina's thoughtfulness as to different perspectives and willingness to offer her opinion and listen to those of others was appreciated by her fellow board members. And whereas the board deeply appreciates Fina's loyal service as a board member and as an effective voice supporting the essential role of the public library in the community. And it is therefore resolved that for the reasons enumerated and for other qualities too numerous to recount, the board thanks Fina Riddle for her service and acknowledges that her presence on the board will be greatly missed. And further resolved that the president of the board is authorized to present resolution 2022/23-213 to Fina Riddle. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I love saying to the members, it was such flattering work. You have made these past four years incredibly fulfilling, especially stable, and stable things. Part of my writing speech that I don't use at home. And so, it's really been... Really like working with you all to have you here your convergence to many matters, particularly the budget that I have to protect longer. I encourage the new trustees to be very respectful, and have a... Questions are... And we've answered every question that I've had, big or small, and never made my question to feel... That's been... Very much appreciated. You are caring. I always remember when I thought of asking away how many notes there is, or as long as what I'm doing, I'm really making it so well. Also, that was... Thank you. And really appreciate the time. Congratulations to the new trustees. I'm glad you're here. I'm glad you're here. You're awesome. Sorry to be so off. No.
No, no, no. Thank you. And I just want to say, Fina, again, thank you so much for your years of service. And Fina's father was a board member, and that is very dear, and I know you miss him deeply. But I know he was so proud to see you on the board and quite a legacy and quite a commitment to service both your dad and your father and for you. For... Thank you. We'll see you around Will Matt for sure. And here at the library for sure. Thank you. Thank you, Fina.
Do we need to move? Do we have a motion to accept resolution 2022-23-213 honoring trustee Riddle?
I move approval of resolution number 2022/23-213 honoring trustee Riddle.
Is there a second, please? I will second that. Okay. Thank you. Secretary? Do we have a...
Trustee Cox?
Yes.
Trustee Di Lorenzo? Yes. Trustee Nealon?
Yes.
Trustee O'Keefe?
Yes.
Trustee Sennett?
Yes.
Trustee Summer?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Motion passed. Okay. Now...
Can I ask a question?
Oh, okay. Oh, we still should do that. Yes. Okay.
At least pass it.
Oh, yes. Of course. I'm sorry. I was negligent, and here we are. Resolution number 2022/23-212. The resolution honoring trustee Lisa Gaines McDonald. Go through? Yes, absolutely. Happy to. Whereas Lisa McDonald was appointed to the Will Matt Public Library Board of Trustees in 2009 to fill a vacancy, elected to the board in 2011, 2015, and 2019 elections, and has ably served for 14 years. And whereas Lisa's leadership capabilities have been demonstrated during her service as secretary, 2011 to 15, VP, 2015 to 2019, and president, 2019 to 2023. And whereas Lisa has continually offered a thoughtful and judicious running of the monthly board meetings in her role as president. And whereas Lisa's commitment to the library has been evident... And whereas Lisa's commitment to the library has been evidenced in numerous areas, including her service on the finance and policy committees. And whereas Lisa's critical eye and assessment of the library's goals and strategic plans have been crucial in the development of these documents. And whereas Lisa's dedication and involvement as the library's representative in the planning and execution of the Village of Wilmette's sequential celebration in 2022 has been commendable. And whereas Lisa's commitment to seeking in community input has been valued for gathering feedback for library programming and strategic plans. And whereas Lisa's steady guidance, good humor, and patience have been regularly evidenced and appreciated by her fellow board members. And whereas Lisa's, whereas the board deeply appreciates Lisa's efforts and service as a board member and is a passionate and effective voice supporting the essential role of the public library in a democratic society. It is therefore resolved, and for the reasons enumerated and for many additional qualities and achievements too numerous to recount, the board thanks Lisa McDonald and for her service and presence on the board. She will be greatly missed. And further resolved, and the president of the board is authorized to present resolution 2022/23-212 to Lisa Gaines McDonald. May we have a motion to approve?
I motion, I move approval of resolution number 2022/23-212, resolution honoring trustee Lisa McDonald as presented. I second.
Oh, thank you. Perfect. May we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Cox?
Yes.
Trustee Di Lorenzo, yes. Trustee Nealan?
Yes.
Trustee O'Keefe?
Yes.
Trustee Sennett? Yes. Trustee Summer?
Yes.
Trustee Fishman?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed. All right, moving on, discussion items. We, oh, I'm sorry, an action item. Yes, top. Oh, right. We have ordinance number 2022/23-208, the ordinance setting the schedule for regular meetings of the board, of the board. That's attachment eight, and I'll have trustee, I'm sorry, Director Austin, I'll get this, say a few words on this, please.
Certainly. So there is a cover page to this document as well as a matter of procedure. We do go through and we confirm the dates of some holidays that typically coincide around the times of these board meetings. It is the tradition of the Wilmette Public Library District Board that we meet on the third Tuesday of the month in the evening, and that is what we're doing here today. So this ordinance is essentially going through and doing that for each of the various months over the course of the next fiscal year. At the same established time that we have today of 6:30 p.m.
Any questions or comments? Thank you. All right. May we have a motion, please?
I move approval of ordinance number 2022/23-208, ordinance setting schedule for regular meetings of the board as presented.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Trustee Cox?
Yes.
Trustee Di Lorenzo, yes. Trustee Nealan?
Yes.
Trustee O'Keefe?
Yes.
Trustee Sennett? Yes. Trustee Summer?
Yes.
Trustee Fishman?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed. And it's nice to have those dates ahead. May I just comment ahead of time so we can all keep those in our calendar?
And they will also be posted to our legal bulletin board where ordinances and resolutions are posted, so it will always be there for our reference.
Excellent. And where is that?
It is by elevator A when you enter the building.
As well as online?
It is, yes. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the annual decision to participate in the public library non-resident services program. This is a procedure that we follow every year. The boundaries of the Wilmette Public Library District match the same boundaries of the Village of Wilmette. Not every district in the state of Illinois enjoys those same geographic boundaries, which is why library districts will annually go through this process to extend services to those residents who may be in unincorporated areas but would directly be served by their, by their public library districts. In this instance, if we did have anyone who was in a unincorporated area or who wished to purchase a library card at Wilmette Public Library and was ineligible to do so from one of their neighboring libraries, the method by which we would use to calculate the fee is the same method that we do for our resident taxpayers. It's called the tax bill method, and this is the methodology that the library has used since we were established as an independent public library district in 1975. So this is an annual tradition for us. To date, there are no non-resident fee cards. However, this establishes the procedure by which we would do that. So we do need to have a motion for this activity.
I move approval of the library's annual decision to participate in the public library non-resident services program using the tax bill method. I second.
I'm sorry, who was?
Carol.
Trustee Sennett, seconded.
Okay. Oh, thank you. I was looking the other way. All right. Excellent. Thank you. May we have a motion, please? Or I'm sorry, may we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Cox?
Yes.
Trustee Di Lorenzo, yes. Trustee Nealan?
Yes.
Trustee O'Keefe?
Yes.
Trustee Sennett? Yes. Trustee Summer?
Yes.
Trustee Fishman?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed. And just to clarify again, you say we have never had anyone apply for this?
Not that, well, I can't say never, but I will say that we currently do not have any non-resident fee cards that we've issued.
All right, moving along, we now will move to our discussion items, and we have the review of the draft of our strategic plan and our community forums feedback, and I will have Director Austin.
Thank you. So in early May, on May 1st and May 6th, we held two community forums to present the strategic plan, and we had trustees who attended that event. Thank you. The, the forums were attended by seven members total, so not a lot of strong participation from the public for any number of reasons, I suppose. But we did get very good feedback from those who did attend those meetings, and we had a nice conversation with all of those people, and we gave a full presentation. The presentation contents were largely based off of, initially, the first part is based off of the same content that we shared with the board back in March of '22, when we initially kicked off our strategic planning process whereby we got more familiarized with our community, the ways in which the library serves, and the goals that the library currently has, and some of the challenges that we've been experiencing over the course of the last few years, which helped to inform the goals that were established in the draft strategic plan. We have been discussing this plan over the course of the last several meetings, and these were the first two public forums that were oriented towards generating feedback from the community. We did receive some small bits of feedback, valuable as they were, that we did incorporate into the draft plan that you see before you this evening. There were some grammatical changes, a shift in order of a couple of words, but no goals were really substantive, substantively edited or changed, nor were any, nor were any additions made to the document. So essentially, the, the content of the strategic plan draft remains essentially the same. Trustees who attended the events, any feedback or comments that you'd like to provide regarding those two forums?
I attended one. There were four members of the public, two couples that came, and they were very thoughtful. They made a few comments, but basically were very supportive of the strategic plan.
And also, I felt that people wanted to hear from us. They wanted to listen and understand more, so, and we wanted and appreciated the feedback we got, but it was kind of gratifying that, like, we were able to put it out there for people to really get a good understanding what was going on in the library. Excellent, and thank you to the trustee Nealan and trustee Summer for your participation. Well, that's your time and effort. Thank you. And good visibility for the board. That's very nice. Thank you.
And President McDonald also attended both of those meetings as well. So is there any additional feedback from our trustees about the draft strategic plan and the minor edits that we made this time around?
So I don't really like the use of the word everyone. There's something about it, I like the concept, although I believe it sounds to over Smith, but I'm wondering what people think about welcomes all who visit. Alternative? You don't like that?
I will say that the, the phrase welcomes everyone was an essential element for the director of the library to make sure that that was included in the mission statement. There are a good number of reasons why I feel that the, the public library serves everyone.
It does. It does. I don't, okay.
And from a communication standpoint, I think for any, any public interactions that we have, it is a valuable point for us to refer to, to anyone that challenges the notion that we serve everyone, that it's in our mission statement that we can refer to that. And it also offers opportunities for us from a communications and marketing standpoint to use that in our communications.
Agreed. Absolutely. I like the addition of the word inspiring, but I'm wondering romantically if it should be too inspired.
Oh, it's okay. It's okay. As is, I'm a, I'm a book editor, so it's okay.
Do you like inspiring?
Yeah, I do. Eyes.
These are good questions.
This is good. This is good, right? I like the dialogue. Yeah, thank you. Just for FYI, I did pick a bit, so, you know, like, the little things that Anthony referred to was like, you know, so I, I can't help myself.
We appreciate it.
We appreciate it, right. We, we all have our strengths, and that is, right, right. Wonderful that you bring that to the table. Definitely.
I was one of the trustees at the Monday meeting and just wanted to point out from that meeting, it just occurred to me that there was a lot of very positive feedback about the local history project.
Yes, and for trustees who were on the board prior to this evening, you did receive correspondence from the individual who attended that meeting.
Yeah, and I thought that was, it really was gratifying to see, and I think the woman that was here had been the librarian since the start.
Right, right. She was a longtime staff member, I understand.
Karen Miller, yes.
Yeah, so that was neat, to make that connection. Because I don't think that anyone was here to provide a ton of extra feedback that more to be informed on what was in there, so, anyway, looks good to me.
Well, I think that feedback is, is important, too, because we've heard that many now are resounding positive interest about this whole area. So as we move forward, we'll see that that's meeting the needs of the community. Thanks, trustee.
I think it's great that it's done. Wahoo, you know?
Okay, so what we have here is a, is a bit of discussion this evening, and our goal is to have this on the agenda for approval at next month's meeting. So if there's any additional feedback that you or constituents would like to make about the strategic plan over the course of the next month, we have that opportunity here, but we, at this point, do not have any other community forums scheduled. Is, is it the will of the board to proceed in that direction, or do we, is this, is this where we want to leave the strategic plan document at the moment? Have we collected our feedback?
I feel that we are, are ready to roll, but that's, having been at both the meetings and met with you individually and worked with Lisa, you know, in preparation, you know, collecting, you know, such. We've reviewed the, I'll just jump in. We've reviewed some of, much of the wording, the concepts. I think it's important, it was trustee McDonald who felt strongly that we gather, offer, I should say, community input, and, yeah, we did.
We had to.
We had to, of course, but we gave the opportunity. Daytime.
Is your question, can we approve it now?
I think this is for, it's an agenda item for our June meeting, but, I mean, it's not on the agenda as an action item this evening, so I would recommend that we take the action next month.
Makes sense.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, then, we can move on to our next item.
It's the review of the May 10th, 2023 Finance Committee meeting, of the draft of the 2324 working budget, and schedule the next Finance Committee meeting. So we'll turn this over now to Director Austin and trustee Summer.
I will just start by, there have been some changes, which everybody got the email on, and tonight's just a discussion. You'll do a short presentation, then we can have a discussion. But we will have another Finance Committee meeting also, which will have, will go into closed session, talk about some personnel issue, salary, I didn't want to say personnel issues. But if there are concerns and things tonight that we should talk about, I think there will be issues to talk about, and, but there won't be any, it's more like a give and take discussion tonight. Further changes could be made, at which time it would be discussed during the next Finance Committee meeting, which is June 9th, is that right? June 9th at?
10 a.m.
10 a.m., yes. I would encourage anyone that is in town on the board that is available, should, I would encourage you to come, if you're in town.
Thank you.
And now I'm going to turn it over to Director Austin.
Okay. So you've got the, the content from the meeting that we discussed on May 10th. I appreciate all of your participation in that meeting. What we are proposing for our budget this coming year in recognizing that we are building back after three years of modifications due to the pandemic, we are adapting to our, our new normal, and a lot of our statistical measures are getting us back into the time, or rather, to the timeframe prior to the pandemic. So we are, we're starting to see a return to our operations as they were prior, and in that case, in my narrative document, that is the cover sheet to the spreadsheet for the budget, you'll see that we are trying to restore the budget for a number of the items in the operating budget. And that includes items related to patron materials and services, particularly in programming, as well as our contractual obligations that are listed under our operations category. The ma, the majority of the increases that you're seeing in the budget for this cycle come from our personnel line, and that is why we're going to devote a special session at this next meeting to discuss those. So bottom line, we're proposing about a 5.5 increase with this draft, and that is an addition of $337,000 to the budget, bringing the budget total to 6.5 million. You will note in the updated spreadsheet, when we are looking at the expense column, as I noted previously, we discovered an error in the cells in terms of the calculation of it, and we noted that the net income, or rather, loss, so the deficit spending that is proposed by this draft budget is just, just below $700,000. We, we did take action last fall in terms of our income with our levy by raising that 4.9%, and you can see that on the income sheet. And we are looking at some additional income that's coming from the interest in the investments that we've made in our CDs, so we are showing about a 7% increase overall in general fund income. That said, the expenses do still exceed what we are going to be collecting. I've tried to make a case for, for the reasons why we're, we're going that direction, but I understand that there may be some concerns about the continued trend with deficit spending. So without going through the exact same presentation that I did on the 10th, are there any questions, comments about the narrative or the numbers that you're seeing in the draft budget for 2324?
A couple of things that I would like to, I am comfortable with where we are now with the general fund taxes. I did a little digging, so I was, so I understand. One thing I would suggest, based on, oh, sorry, yes. One thing I would suggest increasing would be general fund interest as well as replacement taxes. I generally don't like to increase income items, however, I took all the CDs and did a calculation as well as the, what's that other account? Just the money market account? We will be, I would say you could easily add $20,000 to that number. I would be very comfortable with that. I would also say with replacement taxes, we are only, we are already at $138,000, whatever I said in my meeting, we're going to be significantly over that. So even if you increase that $20,000, I still think those are conservative numbers and accurate numbers without overstating income. Does anybody have any questions? Does anybody have any questions or comments on that?
So, let me, say that again, so that.
Our general fund interest at currently, the budget for next year currently is 110,000. We currently, at actual year-to-date, are at 138,000. And we, during the past year, have reinvested at higher rates, so even if we only had 20,000, I believe we will still be above, but it does give us, I think we'll be well above 130,000 in general fund income, interest income, however, I mean, you could, could up at 30,000, honestly, but I think to be conservative, just going up 20,000 would be a very, very easily attainable number. And the second item is replacement taxes. That is based on corporate trusts, S corp tax returns, and they pay a replacement tax, and it's a complicated, but since we are already at 139,000 at current year, and I know we're already going to, we're going to get another 30,000 in May, I think adding 20,000 to that also is a very attainable, realistic income item, based on what we currently have. If you look at last year, I mean, last year we got 153,000, which is a little bit of anomaly because the markets are really good, so by just making it 120,000, I think is reasonable.
I agree.
Anybody questions?
I'm pretty conservative about that, so.
I still think those are conservative numbers.
Right.
Yeah. I will say I also sat down with this, I spent a lot of time on this, I sat down with this and compared it to Andrew Kim's presentation, just to see where we are. We're about $200,000 off. Part of it does have to do with his proposed number for general fund taxes. That's, of course, that's about 90,000 of it, or 80,000, and his is just an estimate, so I, I understand why his number was what his is. I got to tell you, I would like to see our number lower. I would still like to see you look, take some time, based on our comments from our Finance Committee, and consider where we might be able to bring this number down.
When you say it's off, is it off?
Yeah. In his presentation that he gave last fall, Andrew Kim, he has a number of, his income number, his, for the current year, is based on a calculation, and it's a little higher than ours.
He was projecting more income than?
Yes, his projection was higher than ours. So that would also explain why his deficit spending number is lower than ours. That's just a portion of it. Our expenses are still higher than what his projection, just a projection, but in my opinion, looking ahead, it's not, we cannot continue at a $700,000 deficit. It's not an attainable, it's not a long-term thing that the, the library can sustain.
So, since personnel is the largest category, I think at one point we mentioned maybe like an org chart would be helpful just to visualize where those changes have been made in personnel, so, so like, to know where you're adding positions or where positions have not been filled or which ones are vacant, and so, and I know you have two positions, like fairly significant positions available now, so does that factor into?
It does.
So you're, so this is like a full staff projected budget?
And there's a lot of context to that, and we'll unpack that in great detail on the night.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But just saying, so maybe, maybe before the meeting, if we have an org chart, so we can just see, and maybe indications of which ones are vacant and which ones have been added in the last year or so, might be helpful just as we're looking at personnel.
Certainly.
That's actually a really good idea.
Great idea, right.
But once you make those additions, I mean, arguably, you'll say those additions are going to be in each budget thereafter. So if we do accept an increased salary as proposed, we have to take that into consideration that that most likely will stay with us as well as increase. So we just need, I think we need to be cognizant as a board. Not saying I'm opposed to it, but just, you know, as you increase the salaries, as you bring in more positions, that will inevitably come year after year after year. It's not a one-time hit.
Yep. So, I agree. So those are my comments, so I think it's just something you'll have to think about how to address my concern. I just, it's not, it's not, it's not sustainable.
And the budgeting that we've been doing is not sustainable based upon inflation, the cost of contracts, being a competitive recruiter and retainer of our, of our staff that we rely upon to provide the services that we offer, and scaling back on the materials and services, even the little items that we talked about at the meeting on the 10th, will have a direct impact on the services that we provide the public and amount to a very small portion of actually what the total budget is. So there are definitely some difficult things that we're going to need to unpack in this conversation at the next meeting.
And balancing.
Yeah.
Balancing the proposed budget against what we have in the general fund, what we, what Andrew Kim's projections are.
Yeah, because even if we continue to increase the levy every year to the maximum amount, we will never, if we keep increasing the levy and increasing the expenses by proportion, we will always have a very large deficit, and we just can't do that in the long term. So some, something has to give. I know that this is unusual, we're in an unusual situation with inflation, but you can't always keep lock stepping everything up the same way, the same way.
Thank you, Tracy.
That's kind of sobering and.
The bad guy, but I was going to tell you.
Right. No, we appreciate, I, I think all of us can say, we appreciate you.
I don't think it's being the bad guy, I think it's being realistic. I think it's looking at the proposed budget and all of the wonderful services and, and everything, and then looking at it in the totality of what we have and what we want to have in the next five, 10, 15, 20 years, and, and really being cognizant of that. Yeah.
I also want to, I cannot believe after, before the Finance Committee that I did not catch, I have to say I'm very grateful for one of our participant, member people, that I did not catch, I didn't spend much time on the income previously, but the fact that just from an analytical standpoint, knowing we raised the levy by 5%, and the expenses went up 5%, I should have been able to just analytically noted that, of course, the deficit wouldn't drop so significantly. It happens, but.
So can I, so if there, if we run a deficit for the year, then the, the balance comes out of the special reserve?
No, it comes out of the general fund reserves.
The general fund, okay.
The special reserves are only, we, that money is only going to be for whether it's the telephone or the.
So you're just spending now?
Capital expenses.
Yes, and the financial, the finance, the finance policy, financial policy is to maintain six to 12 months' worth of reserve in the general fund reserves at all times. So we are at about 12 months, I, we are there, and we certainly, according to the financial policy, we could approve it as-is, we could dip into it, but looking long-term, looking ahead to five, 10 years, what kind of financial health do you need to leave for the next set of trustees, the next director, the next, and, and just thinking about it. We may come to agreement, this is fine, but I think it's just something we all have to be aware of and think about.
Thank you.
And I think another point of detail is to look at the trending in our past budgets. Last year, last fiscal year was the closest we ever got to matching our budget, and we got in at 97%. So even, try as we may with our expenses, we don't always get to 100% of the budget that we've spent. So that was the closest we got, and we left about 200,000 on the table. So just keep that, keep that in mind. Okay. Is there any other discussion about this draft budget? Okay?
Anything else? Okay, thank you. Next is a important topic, the Local Governance, Government Efficiency Committee meeting. Director Austin, thank you.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to provide a little bit more background about this item on our agenda. On June 10, 2022, the Illinois General Assembly enacted Public Act 102-1088, creating the Decennial Committees on Local Government Efficiency, the ACT. The ACT requires certain units of local government to form a committee to study local efficiencies and create and file with the county board a report with recommendations regarding efficiencies and increased accountability. Contrary to the language in an earlier version of the Senate Bill 3789, the ACT does not require a committee to study whether government, whether a government unit should consolidate with another unit of government, municipality or county. It is merely for us to do this study. Committees formed under this ACT are required to do the three following items. Study the government unit's governing statutes, ordinances, rules, procedures, powers, jurisdiction, shared services, intergovernmental agreements, and interrelationships with other government units and the state of Illinois. Will collect data, research, and analysis as necessary to prepare a written report required in Section 25 of the ACT, and we will summarize the committee's work and findings in a written report. This report must include recommendations in respect to increased accountability and efficiency. The committee must provide the report to the county board in which the governmental unit is located, no later than 18 months after the committee is formed. So 18 months from today, we will be filing our report. Section 10B of the ACT provides that each committee is to consist of the following members. One, the elected or appointed members of the governing board and the governmental unit. That's everyone who's at the table today. At least two residents of the governmental unit who are appointed by the chair of the board or the governmental unit with the advice and consent of the, of the board. We'll accomplish that step here in a moment. And three, any chief executive officer or other officer of the governmental unit. That's me. The president or chair of the governing board of the governmental unit or his or her designee serves as the chair of the committee. So President Fishman will be serving as the chair of this committee. Those are, those are the basic procedures and the outline that we wanted to establish this evening in establishing this committee for the first time. I have an FAQ that I will pass out here at the table, and we have.
Excuse me, thank you, pardon me.
We have two open seats at our table, and at this moment, I would like to invite to the table our, wait, no, I can't do that yet. I have, I have a motion in front of me. Do you have a little piece of paper, John?
I do. Did you? May I read this?
Yes, you may.
Pardon me. Excuse me. I move to appoint community members Eric Beederman and Linda Deekman to the Women Public Library Local Government Efficiency Committee. May we have a roll call, please?
Is there a second?
Oh, I'm sorry, is there a second? I second. Okay, thank you.
Roll call, trustee Katz?
Yes.
Ms. Lorenzo, yes.
Yes.
Trustee O'Keefe?
Yes.
Trustee Senna?
Yes.
Trustee Summer?
Yes.
Trustee Fishman?
Yes. Thank you. Motion passed. I have some.
All right, at this time, I would like to invite our two community members to join us at the table. And then that extra FAQ copy that you have goes to our other community, our committee members.
Chairs for them? Yes.
Welcome Linda and Eric. Thank you so much for offering to participate in this committee with us.
Welcome.
Nice to have you here.
So Linda and Eric were both part of the application process that we had last fall for the vacancy on the board, and we reached out to them to see if they had interest in serving in this committee in a way to get to know our organization a little bit more. So our, the, the main business of this committee has actually taken place for this evening. This is our organizational meeting. Are there any questions about the purpose of this committee or the work that we're, we're doing here this evening, since we've got everyone at the table?
I think I'm exactly unclear as to what the committee's, it seemed, the narrative, which I did read through, seems fairly vague. Would that be accurate?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. It's not just me.
I do feel, if I may editorialize, I do feel that this is an interesting exercise for a public library district, as I think that public library districts represent some fairly efficient and well-organized units of local government. I think we, we convey an extreme value to our resident taxpayers, and I think we also have a lot of interesting partnerships that will be valuable for us to enumerate in our written report and demonstrate that we actually are very well-connected in our community. So this will compel us to do a self-study in an accounting of all of those intergovernmental relationships that we have, as well as other ways that we operate with efficiencies.
Is there self-expected benchmark for efficiency in municipal government? Or is it a library district?
Well, there are statutes that govern us, and so we will be, we'll be looking at that, and there are guidelines that are established by the Illinois State Library, which is established by the Secretary of State's office, that sets forth standards for public libraries. And we meet all of those standards, and we've, we've done a self-study of that over the course of the last couple of years with this board. So those will be some details that we will enumerate in our report. But to your question about, in, in terms of the outcomes of this study, in terms of how will we know when we're efficient, there are really no measures or guidelines that have been provided to us at this time.
So, like, how long are we expecting this report to be? Is it like a five-pager, a 50-pager, or is it?
Single-page bullet points?
Exactly. Yeah.
In one of the documents, I emailed you a separate set of documents that, prior to this meeting, and there was an attachment that had a header by Ansel Glink, a legal firm that, that provides services to public libraries, and they appended a template-type report that has been circulated throughout our library system rails, and that is the, the document that they're recommending that we kind of fill in the blanks by. So that will give you kind of an idea about what the outcome will likely look like.
And do we need to set up a date for the next meeting?
So I think that, yes, I, I think it would be wise for us to do this. According to the, the guidelines that we've received, we can convene this meeting as part of our regular meeting, and I think for scheduling purposes, I think that makes the best sense. We've just established our ordinance that we meet on the, the third Tuesday of the month at 6:30 PM. We can look forward to a meeting that maybe has a lighter agenda and give ourselves some time to conduct some of this research so that we have some documentation to share with you all at this next meeting. So that, I think, would be the order of business at this point, would be to compel me to do that research, to compile this information, and to then start submitting reports to you. To that end, I think as, as a matter of course, I should mention that everyone here at the table is subject to the Open Meetings Act as well as the Freedom of Information Act. So when we have correspondence about this, just know that whatever email address that we use to correspond with you will be subject to the Freedom of Information Act. If any member of the public would like to seek information about the study that we're doing, they will want to seek the emails that we're, we're corresponding with, so just FYI. So for our two community members, if you would like to establish a second, an email account specifically for this purpose, just notify me which address you would like to use, and we'll, we'll use that. For our trustees, you will use your willmetlibrary.info account. So yes, we were tentatively thinking that the October meeting would be a good time for us to, you know, have some time to, to collect some information. We don't have major activity that we do at the October meeting. We will likely be doing a study again with our financial analyst around that time, ahead of our levy adoption in November, so we thought that that might be a good opportunity for us to get together with this group again. But again, to that point, we have 18 months to, to complete all of our work, so it's up to you to decide how quickly you would like to meet.
I did recall that it said there were three meetings.
Three meetings, so.
So we've number one, check, correct?
This is number one.
One, and second meeting, draft the report you've recommended, then third, finalize and approve. So, but 18 months.
18 months, and we may decide that we need more time, we, we may decide that there's more that we want to do as a result of this, so good to get some, some early action and to collect that information early.
Yeah, I would, my, I was going to be mindful of your time, being, in fact, you don't have an assistant director now, we've got a lot coming this summer, we have the budget coming, and then, it's not so bad July and August, but just, I would say, for you, I would look at your schedule. If October seems to be a light month, I think we could do a tentative. If you find that things, we have too much to do, we could always, because we have 18 months, we could always push it back a little bit. January's usually pretty light, too.
It is, yep.
And December, we often have, don't meet, and so have nothing, so we still could have a meeting in December at some point.
So, tentatively for our community members, are you available at, on? Tentatively, for our community members, are you available on October 18, I believe is the next regular meeting? Linda? Yes? Eric?
Yep.
At the moment.
At the moment.
Dr. West?
Oh, it would be, it should be a Tuesday.
Okay.
Whoever has Do I have a calendar? I have a calendar.
Yes, it would be 10/17.
Okay. Thank you. Already, Eric, you're
You're already
Proving your
Attention to detail. Thank you.
Okay, so I think we'll tentatively say that meeting number two of this committee will be October 17. And in the time between, I will compile information and I will correspond with you all with the information that I compile. Committee members, let me know what email addresses that you would like to have this done per FOIA. Are there any other questions or comments about the Local Government Efficiency Act Committee?
Thank you for being a part of it.
Thank you. Thank you. Great addition.
Appreciate your time. Thank you. Your commitment.
All right.
All right.
This concludes the business of the Local Government Efficiency Act Committee. Thank you.
Very efficient.
You're welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to have your evening returned to you.
Great. Thank you so much. Moving on to the director's report.
Okay, thank you.
Have a sip of water before you move forward? Great. Thank you.
I will keep my statements brief this month, but highlighting a couple of points from my report. Shelving staff completed a major physical shift this past month. I've talked about accessibility over the course of the last several meetings. The entire lower level of the library has now been shifted, which means that we have physically taken all the items that were on the bases of the shelves, and we have moved them up so they are actually on what is, what we would define as the bottom shelf and not on the bases of the shelving units. We have also moved the shelves that are at the top of all those shelving ranges down a few pegs to try to make them more accessible overall. In, by doing this shift, we have also opened up a bit more space at the eye-level shelves, which has allowed us to adopt our merchandising standards to face out more of our materials so that folks can easily tell what collections they're browsing as they're walking through the stacks. And we are finding that a number of our displays are effective as those items get checked out, and we put new items out to circulate. So cheers to the shelving team for their continued progress with trying to promote accessibility and the merchandising of the collections. The staff is currently working on the large type collection and will then be moving their actions to the fiction room as we move forward. In terms of the collections, during the month of April, we added three sewing machines and an additional Nintendo Switch Lite to the Library of Things collection. We've also been working with the Library of Things Committee, has been developing more documentation for all of our circulating items, updating all of our procedures and guidelines and getting additional associated materials related to that collection up on our website and the procedures adopted by our Digital and Maker Services Department, who are responsible for inventorying those items when they get checked in. They continue to be very popular. In terms of digital collections, this past month, our Digital Maker Services Manager, Lauren Kelly, worked with our Business Librarian, John Amundson, to get a new online resource, Simply Analytics, up and running. John met with the product reps and got a demonstration, and he was impressed with this resource, which we think will be a boon for the community. Simply Analytics is a mapping analytics and data visualization application that makes it easy for anyone to create interactive maps and reports using thousands of demographic business and market, marketing variables. So it is live on our website. Take a look at it, Simply Analytics. Lauren also worked with our Adult Services, Genealogy and Local History Librarian, Eva Ann Johnson, to obtain usage statistics for our local history digital collection. They are appended to our monthly statistic sheet, which is attached to the back of my report, and you will see that our local history collection is one of our top-performing digital resources, to the point that we mentioned a moment ago in our strategic planning session. There is a high demand for our unique local history collection, and as we've noted in our previous discussions about the strategic plan, the items that we are seeking to digitize as part of our digitization project in the plan are uniquely Wilmet Library-only. They are not items that are held by any other collection, and therefore, they are items that we do need to preserve, and they are in demand. Couple other digital-related items. Overdrive, which is our primary platform for eBooks, sunsetted its Overdrive app on May 1 in favor of their newer, easier-to-use app, Libby. So if you are an Overdrive user and you haven't already downloaded the Libby app, I encourage you to do so, as that's the only way you're going to get those resources now. In speaking of Overdrive, we saw a substantial increase in eBook checkouts this month with over 9,000 eBook circulations, and that's a new record for our eBook circulations in one month. We've been tracking that data for the last three years, so we're really impressed by that. Lauren also noted that they've been working with LexisNexis to make sure that there was off-site authentication for all patrons. Historically, apparently, this was, only some people had access to that resource remotely, so they were able to promote that access. So we thank them for that detail. Lauren also was very assistive in working with the team in our circulation, IT and Digital and Maker Services Departments related to Polaris's server migration. The Cooperative Computer Services, our catalog vendor, is going to be moving, and they needed to migrate their server. And that required to re-authenticate all of our SIP connections. I won't get into a lot of jargon, but it actually caused an awful lot of disruption in our system. It basically took down everything that we have connected to the system and anything that authenticates against a library card, including all of these digital resources that I mentioned. For a period of a day or so, some of those connections were disrupted. Our staff did a fantastic job of pivoting, updating all the figures that we needed to, and getting us back up and running before we opened that Monday after the change had taken place. So our team did a fantastic job of that project. The big activity of the last month was the library's One Book Everyone Reads Initiative. And as I've mentioned before, our title this time around for 2023 was Kevin Wilson's Now Is Not the Time to Panic. We held 12 programs exploring themes of the book, ranging from book discussions and maker programs to presentations on moral panic and creativity in the world of artificial intelligence. On last Thursday, May 11, author Kevin Wilson was in conversation with radio personality Allison Cuddy, and we had 131 folks who logged in to participate in that program. And we have 92 copies of the book that are all checked out right now. It's been a very popular read for the community. The video of the discussion is posted on our website and is up there, and we've already had some folks who've been viewing it because they couldn't make it that night. It was actually running up against another program that we were affiliated with, which was a fan presentation that ran right at that exact same moment. As I've mentioned before, we can't always control when those fan events happen, and we get very short notice about those. So there were a couple of really good author events happening that evening. One Book Everyone Reads, as you know, is funded by the Friends of the Wilmet Public Library. They continue to fund our programming related to our community reads, and you can learn more about this on our website, wilmetlibrary.info/onebook. All right. A little bit more about the digitization project. In my Adult Services report, you'll see that Eva Ann Johnson's been working with our IT manager, Michael Pasternich, to migrate our digitized Wilmet Life and Wilmet Beacon issues from an in-house server to an IP-restricted portion of our local history digital collection. Those newspapers cover years 2008 to 2019, and we are now hosting our local history digital collection with our digital world. It's called a Vita Site, and we were talking about this in our Finance Committee meeting about how we're starting to ingest all of these copies that we're digitizing up onto this website. We already are housing all of our digitized photographs, telephone directories, and all of our pre-1939 newspapers on that site. But clearly, there's a big gap between 1939 and 2008, and that is substantially what the work is that we're working on as part of the strategic plan, is to digitize all of the printed microfilm copies that we have. So that's, the first step was getting all of this updated, and that's what Eva and Michael have been working on. And we've got another batch of items to be digitized that we're going to be sending out here shortly.
And that's expensive, correct?
It is. It's a costly thing to go through a process like this, because it's a two-step process. It's a very laborious task to do the digitization, because they have to manually place newspapers on these scanners. They're incredibly high-resolution, and they also capture online character recognition, OCR, so that, as I've said before in these meetings, if anyone has done research with microfilm, for example, you can't just do a keyword search on those. You have to kind of hunt and peck to try to find the thing that you're looking for. By digitizing these collections, we're actually going to be promoting the accessibility of the collections by making them easier via a keyword search. But yes, the volume of the pages of them is really where the cost is. It's a fraction of a penny for each of these items, but when you factor in how many reels of film, how many pages are in a newspaper, over the course of the range of years, it's a fairly substantial process to do the digitization, let alone to get the labor to have them uploaded and make them accessible on the website. A key first step in that process, though, is negotiating the copyright for those, because the copyright needs to be extended to the library in order for us to provide online access to that. So that is a process that we're currently working on right now, and I will report on our progress to that. I will say that the attorney that we're working with has successfully negotiated the exact same process, using the same vendors as Wilmet Library at our neighbors to the north at the Winnetka North Field Public Library District. So we feel pretty strongly that we're going to be able to go through this process. So that's part of, well, no, they don't do that, unfortunately. But getting the rights from them is the key first step in that process. We have, the grants are really not that substantial and are typically awarded to those districts that are less well-financially endowed than Wilmet. We try. One avenue that we're attempting right now, as well as seeking a partnership with the local history museum to see if they will help carry that, although that does extend the copyright then to that agency, and we're working on that detail. I will keep you all posted about how successful we are with this process as we move forward. All right. Our team librarian, Krista Hutley, has been very busy, as you'll see on page 11 of my report. She's working with new trair students, supporting two programs. One is the Integrated Global Studies Program. We've got three students who've been working with us through that program, and we're working with two other new trair students who need a community sponsor for their senior projects. So there's information in my report about that. Also in Adult Services, I want to mention this month that our new Adult Services Manager, Kathleen Blair, started on April 17. She attended our first community forum on May 1, and I think a number of you may have also met her earlier this evening when we were taking our pictures. Our former Adult Services Manager, Jill McEwen, transitioned from her role to the Senior Services Librarian on May 1, and has been working over the course of those first two weeks of Kathleen's tenure with her onboarding and training. Jill is excited to continue her work that she started back in March of 2020, focusing on implementing dementia-focused kits and services to our aging population in support of our community's growing needs there. So we're excited for our new Senior Services Librarian position. Onto Youth Services. Really excited this month to see that we've greatly enhanced our services related to adaptive and accessible services for youth. We hosted our first sensory-friendly play café on April 14. We also launched some new assistive devices to loan to children while they visit the library or attend programs to help them adapt to the environment in the library. As I mentioned at the last meeting, we've got social stories that are up on our website. We have an accessibility landing page with a lot of resources for the community there. Staff is also beginning a series of blog posts highlighting the resources, programs and materials that are of interest to patrons with sensory processing disorders and other inclusion needs, and you can find that on our website as well. The library hosted its first Eid Outfitter celebration in collaboration with the South Asian Families of Wilmet, including a Storytime bookmark, drawing crafts, Henna painting, live musicians and food. And we had more than 120 people attend that joyful celebration in this room. So that was the first such collaboration that we had with that organization and our first such celebration. In the yellow, oh, can I pass that yellow packet around? Is everyone at this side seeing it? Okay. This is our correspondence for the month, and there's also some, the results of our children bookmark contest are in there. So the library participates in an annual bookmark design contest, and 82 children participated in that in grades K through 8. And there's a sample of all of them there in the packet, as well as postings of them up in the Youth Services Department, so check that out. Couple items from Digital and Maker Services. We continue to do our maker appointments. We had 13 appointments in the month of April with 41 attendees. Still a very popular event. The DMS staff conducted 21 one-on-one help interactions in the month of April, which is really great. We're ramping up this level of service that we're providing there, and the topics of those interactions include using email, printing attachments, embedding links into docs, formatting drives, recovering and transferring movie files, navigating the web, printing copies of tax returns, formatting resumes, cassette digitization, and so much more. Our staff are really experts, and our community recognizes that we are our community genius bar, and there are a lot of resources that we can provide here for folks. The DMS team is unified officially here in April. We moved our team so that they're all in one office. They're occupying the former circulation and shared offices across from the Book Club hub. So centralizing the team has been able to promote a sense of departmental identity and has allowed us to be more organic in our collaborations. So we're thrilled to have our full-time DMS team staff all in one space. As I mentioned before, we've got, the cassette digitization is up and running, and we're also having some technology refresher courses offered to the Adult Services staff as they help to back up the services that we provide in the tech center when the DMS staff are taking their breaks. All right. Couple, I'm almost there. Couple big programs that we had in April. One of our One Book Everyone Reads programs, our pop art is for everyone, the art of Andy Warhol, had 65 attendees via Zoom. That was awesome. Also via Zoom, in our partnership with Illinois Libraries Present, we had 130, 103 Wilmet patrons attended the Conversation with Will Shortz: Secrets of the Puzzle Master. Appendoned to my report, you'll also see a write-up from Gina Grillo from the Chicago Tribune. She wrote a very nice write-up about our One Book program that was, that ran in the Wilmet Life. If you haven't already, check out the art show that's around us here. This is our first community art show in a very long time. We're thrilled to have that back, and we've got a couple more art programs coming up later this year. Then I've got a couple personnel things that I want to add. So we mentioned this a little bit ago. This week, we are in our first round of interviews for our Circulation Manager position, and we're really excited about this process and looking forward to hopefully having our Circulation Manager position filled by the end of the fiscal year. And last Friday, I was really excited to post the Assistant Director position that's been vacant for a while. So we'll be collecting applications through the middle of June and then go through that review process and hopefully have that individual on our team late July, early August, I would expect. And the last item I wanted to share, and I'm sorry to end on this note, but I did share this with you via email, I wanted to share that Wilmet Library experienced a loss on our team on April 29. Our longtime Assistant Manager of the Facilities Department, Rick Merrill, passed away after a four-month struggle with cancer. He was a tremendous asset to this organization. His kindness, his care, his attention to detail is going to be greatly missed on our team. We held a celebration in his honor in this room last week. It was Rick's wish that we celebrate his life with pizza and pop, and we did just that. We had We had former staff, as well as the current team, show and give their respects to Rick, and we're really grateful for everything that Rick has done for the library. And I guess I should mention here, too, as we were making our reflections that day, we noted that we don't think that any staff member has attended more board meetings than Rick did. Rick was the original videographer of our library board meetings, and he did all of the room setups and everything for us. So he knew an awful lot about the inner workings of the organization in his 26 years of service to the library. So we are really grateful for Rick and everything that he has done, and we want to honor his memory. With that, that concludes my report for the month of April. Are there any questions that you have for me?
I do. I want to, I first want to thank, I always review the statistics at the back, and I actually want to thank the staff because it looks like there's several they've looked at and they're not renewing, and I do appreciate the fact they spent the time looking at that. And I would encourage them to continue to do so. There seem to be a few that have one use, one or two or several, and I, but I can see they're doing that, and I do appreciate them doing that, so that does help the budget.
Thank you. That's great.
The other thing, I don't know if anybody attended the author event. Whatever your feelings were about the book, the author event was very good. He was a very engaging, really interesting author, so I would encourage if you have some time to watch the video.
I do have a question. What is moral panic, according to this author?
You're putting me on the spot.
It might be in relationship to AI, which we could maybe imagine is like sort of a Terminator thing, or you know what I mean? Brave new world, almost. Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
But I will also add to Tracy's remark, if you haven't seen the video, I would encourage you to take a look. If for nothing else than author Kevin Wilson making remarks about the value of public libraries in his life.
Oh, yes.
Was a really great unsolicited Valentine to libraries.
Nice.
All right. And I'll research.
Food for thought. Yeah, we'll just have to take that offline. Thank you, Director Austin. Great. Moving on to committee reports, trustee Nealon, something, anything to?
I do not have anything.
Add about ILA?
Or ILA?
Okay. For Rails, Director Austin?
I do not have anything for Rails.
Okay. Not a problem. Intergovernmental.
Did you pass the yellow?
Inter, trustee Nealon, intergovernmental cooperation committee?
Well, there is a meeting scheduled for June 1 at 5:00 PM, and that is really the gist of it. They're gonna, the committee wants to define challenges and look for solutions and also identify the timeframe of like, sort of near future, medium future, and long term, like, because it is such a broad area.
This is for mental health, right?
Down.
This is because, for the mental health?
Yes, and the topic is mental health in this community, yes.
How's the new sustainability manager?
I'm sorry.
I was just, because the sustainability manager is from that committee, correct?
Different. That was an outcome of the committee, but that work is now complete because they hired the sustainability coordinator. So now the committee's work is shifted to mental health for the next year. And so the library does have a relationship, obviously, where we have a bit of time with the sustainability coordinator. I've met with Lucy Mellon. We have not scheduled our follow-up on what our activities are going to be, but she took keen interest in the fact that sustainability was a theme of our strategic work, so we will be working together for sure.
And trustee Nealon, that June 1, 5 o'clock meeting open to the public?
Yes.
Yes.
Is it streamed by any chance?
Pardon me?
Is it streaming by any chance?
No.
It is not.
No, we anticipate that it's going to be at Mallinckrodt again. There may be subcommittee meetings that they're talking about that may be conducted via Zoom.
Okay, great. We're passing around the communication folder. This way. And Director Austin, anything to add about this ALA Annual Conference, June 22 through 27?
I will just add that the library is sending a number of delegates to the conference as ALA is in Chicago, and there is a component that relates to trustees, for those of you who are interested. If you go to ala.org/united, that's United for Libraries, that's the Committee for Trustees and for Friends Organizations, you can see the list of the workshops that are offered for trustees.
Are any of them remote? Are they all in person?
There is a remote conference, but I'm not, I cannot attest to what the remote options are for trustees, but I do have a couple staff who are going to be attending virtually as well.
Could you, you sent us an email a little bit about a workshop you attended and you passed on to us. I'm sorry I haven't reviewed it yet, but any quick words on that?
Yeah, so ILA, the trustee forum for the Illinois Library Association.
Illinois, okay.
Hosts a number of workshops. Trustee Summer attended one of them related to finance, and I attended one about running an efficient meeting. And it's interesting, they videoed it, and it was kind of a, it was a play, sort of, a play that gave an opportunity to address the range of things that may come up in the course of a public meeting of a board, ranging from, you know, oh, so-and-so wants to attend remotely, they're on vacation, so I've got them here on the phone and we want them to join. Well, I don't think that they can do that per the rules, you know, that sort of thing. So it was an opportunity to play through a number of the various scenarios. There were some procedural details that were provided. I think that for those who attended our trustee orientation, you've gotten that information. It was about a 90-minute session, and if you're interested, check it out. I think its intent was well, it was well-intended. The execution was a little less than what I was hoping it to be, but I do think the content was really well-done. So if you can make your way through the play, so to speak, I think it's an interesting concept and a good example of how a government can run an efficient meeting.
Great.
That's my ramble.
Thank you. Good. Good. Any, all right, moving on. Any new business? Seeing none? All right. May I have a motion, please, for adjournment?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. At. Give us.
8:05.
8:05. Excellent.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.